Well, I'll call meeting order and our first item on the agenda is catching up with Kim Williams. Community asset project that you have and I guess we would just like to find out what you're wanting to chat with us about.
Thanks. I appreciate the time. Unfortunately, I had two other books that were gonna come but we mixed up the date. Is this an off?
Yes, it is an off week.
Okay. I didn't do a good job saying when. Anyway, so two things. We, several groups have been meeting over the last several months. Or individuals have been meeting over the last several months with an interest to learn more about what assets and I guess the best way to say it, what currently exists in the community, like the current landscape. What, you know, how many, for your housing survey, for example, you know, how many mixed housing, multi-unit housing exists in the town? And they can probably find that on the website or they can find it in the town meeting notes. But most of the folks that we've been talking to don't really know how to access that information or where to go. Or, you know, number of students in the classroom in school, number of students getting free meals, you know. So kind of just information about what the current state of the town is. So we have decided, a few of us, a pre-planning group in addition to folks who've met as community collaborators, which is a group that has come together over the years made up of the local nonprofit groups, grassroots groups, those guys, you know, the utility club, Community Care of Lyme, parish nurses, you know, on and on. So we are, we've been speaking to other organizations that have been working with towns around doing some community asset assessments. Vital Communities, maybe you're familiar with them, they're located in White River Junction, the Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission. They have a program that they work with rural communities with the Nature Conservancy. So they have what they call kind of resilience building efforts. So we've been very excited about this. We have had conversations with the groups in town that aren't necessarily associated with municipal leadership or those that are representing committees and boards. And to do this kind of work, as we've been told, is really about partnering with leadership from the town, I guess, from the town perspective. So we put together this little proposal. I don't know, I sent it to David, maybe he sent it around.
I did not send it around yet.
Okay, I do have some copies. Should I give them to people without me on both? I don't know how many I have though. I think you should get one for sure. You guys can share. There you go. Okay. So can I, I can go through this proposal? Is that? I just, I don't know how much time. I don't want to take too much time.
Well, I was hoping we could give you about 15 or 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm sorry that the two other books, because they would have probably done a better job at this than I would. Okay, so what we're talking about is a partnership proposal with the Lyme Planning Board. And partnership with a small p, I guess, meaning there's not much you would need to do other than be interested that we're doing this. And, okay, so Community Care of Lyme and the Lyme Community Collaborators are proposing a collaborative project that would strengthen how Lyme supports all its residents. So kind of a general about why. And so at a recent meeting that we had of community collaborators, I think there were 14 different organizations represented. We had 18 people. We asked what current work is, what are they doing in the community? What information, more information do they need to do their work? Specific information about gaps in the, you know, what they saw in the community at the moment were that isolated older adults were needing support, families on limited income were unsure where to turn, and youth seeking connection and activities were, there were some gaps around that. So we had great conversation, talked about how we could do some more collaborating opportunities that the Lyme Foundation could have funding of projects. So that conversation seemed to be very generative. The good, so as I write here, the good news is we already have many programs, volunteers, and community resources. We just need to map what we have and identify where connections are maybe missing. So we would like to do what we would call an asset mapping project where we would take the information that currently exists and pretty much make that information more accessible to more people in the community. Those that may not have had the time to read through the town meeting or who are unable to come to these kinds of meetings. So that would be what they would call an asset mapping exercise, so to speak.
And so how would you propose to make that information available? If people don't come to meetings or?
Yeah, no, that's a really great question. So that would be a great thing to get guidance on how best, once we collect this information, how do we effectively disseminate it? Whether it's with community meetings, whether it's through mailing out information, whether it's through sending, you know, meeting with groups and individuals. So I think it would be a community engagement exercise for sure, once we gather this information. And the fact is, this information already exists. It's not that we are trying to do a needs assessment and trying to find out the information. It's more what's already known and how can we better share it. So again, this is not just a process we have decided is an interesting process. This is very much what's happening. It aligns with what's kind of happening regionally with communities. Vershear is engaged in this, Enfield has done this. Woodsville, Woodsville, sorry. I was thinking Heverle. Woodsville has done this. So some towns that are smaller, some are bigger than Lyme. But it seems to be the trend in terms of better understanding what exists in communities now so that we can kind of build on that versus what's missing. Because the building on it would hopefully fill some of those gaps. So as I said, Vital Communities in Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission, they have, doing this work with communities. So that was kind of, so getting to more what we're proposing to do is doing this community asset inventory, which is on the page two, you know, pros, you know, taking three months. Map demographic information, you know, identify where there's community connections and gathering places. And so what currently exists, what's the current state? Share, learn from community members, learn from our community coordinators, what conversations, you know, having conversations with diverse groups. Here we say survey to reach those less likely, but we really don't want to do a survey. The idea is not to do a survey. There's over-surveying. We know that you all are working on a housing survey. We want this to align with what you're doing, not diverge, build on what you're doing. So and then try to analyze this information and share it. And here, this, I think, Vicki gets to your point, like how do we do this? How we synthesize? And how do we share this information so that it can be helpful for planning? Okay, so why are we partnering? Why are we interested? Why aren't we just doing this? Because the models that are actually out there really depend on partnering with the town. You know, different capacity of the town, whether, you know, it's a small town where it's run by primarily volunteer or, you know, the modeling is, depends on what the specific town organization is. So why partner with the Planning Board? This work connects directly with the work you're doing, kind of provides data for future planning decisions about community spaces, programs, and infrastructure. It could potentially help with grant opportunities for the town around, you know, very specific documentation, documented gaps. It could potentially feed into some planning, a wellness plan, you know, other kinds of planning for the master, you know, as the master plan evolves through your housing survey and other things going. Most importantly, what are we asking from the Planning Board? Okay, a formal endorsement of this process. Assistance in reaching town departments and other boards, which we're having a bit of a hard time kind of engaging in that. Input on any kind of questions or what information would be best to share. And maybe looking at our findings and what we come up with and giving us some feedback. But that probably would be the more time-consuming, like what do you think of what we found? Does this align with what you're thinking and your finding and the conversations you're having and the work you've been doing? And we're being in conversations with the Lyme Foundation for funding part, potentially. Community Care of Lyme putting some funds in. So we would help with coordination, data collection, summary. So it's really, the ask is more, we want you to know that we're in this process. We know you're doing the housing survey and this, we want to be supportive of that process. And so really the point of today, me unfortunately, again, others are here, is to let you know what we're up to and to see if this is of interest to you. If we do engage Lake Sunapee, Upper Valley, you know, the Planning Commission in this process, they actually work with the Nature Conservancy and they do a lot of this work with communities. It's a definite cost for their engagement. And they build actually on, they initiate and they start with an issue that is very non-controversial. Maybe like, how do we plan for flooding? Okay, we could argue that could be controversial, but, you know, it's not older adults, it's not youth, it's not different population segments, it's more general. And, you know, how do we come together, bring the town and the community groups together to do planning? So they facilitate that and the Nature Conservancy through the Lake Sunapee Upper Valley Regional Planning Commission, they do this collaboratively with towns. So they're interested, we've talked to them, but obviously it's a longer term. And then also the other group, Vital Communities, they work and do some consulting with bringing town municipal groups, towns together with local organizations so that we're kind of not as siloed but kind of working across. So this is not even an ask at the moment, but more a sharing of what we're doing because we feel like the Planning Board is, would be a really important group to know what we're doing and to be part of engaging with possibly Lake Sunapee, Upper Valley Regional Planning Commission. And if we were to do it, you'd probably be a good partner there. And that's all. Sorry. I hope that that's a little bit, you know, informative of where we're going. And yeah, that was all. And I'm sure if you read through it, you have questions, maybe you have questions now. Yeah?
Well, I appreciate you coming and talking to us about it. Have you at all talked with the Select Board? Because in a way, I mean, we don't have like the magic keys to get in to talk to other departments. And if you think we do, we really don't. We, you know, fortunately if we err in here tonight and he might turn into a pumpkin if we stay here too long, time, you have other things. But we don't have those magic keys. And most of the social service, funding and kind of initiatives come through the Select Board, not the Planning Board. So when you talk about flooding and hazard mitigation, planning and all that, I think that's kind of Planning Board related for sure, because that informs us about where development should go or not go or what, you know, what people should do. So if flood resiliency is gonna be a topic, I think that's, that's like, Planning Board's kind of spot in there. But for some of the social service stuff, we're not involved day-to-day with that. So I don't know if, if you're looking for us to really help with that, we are not the right people probably for that. But doesn't mean that some of the other stuff isn't good. So I just want to make sure that you don't think, oh, the Planning Board's already gonna... So assistance reaching town departments and other boards. We have a, you know, hard time, I mean, it's not like difficult, but it's not anything that, you know, we sit with them or meet jointly or anything, you know, it's very special occasion stuff like that we would have the fire chief here because we've got a specific fire thing, but it's not for general discussion. We don't usually do that. I think that all of us as individuals might have input on the key questions that the assessment should address. But as a board and something that kind of flows out of our master plan, I'm not sure that we have. I mean, so, I mean, we as individuals could participate in the discussion. But there was anything to go, oh yeah, the Planning Board, you know, has already said that and stamped that, you know, it's a great question or whatever. And then I, draft findings, I mean, I think we all as individuals are, you know, interested. And in terms of like, if there's a community facility need, it's important for us to kind of know about that. But we don't even do like a community facilities, you know, capital improvement plan or communities facilities. I mean, most of that is actually handled by the Select Board. When they, you know, need to redo the library, you know, there's a reserve fund and money goes into that. And the Select Board kind of manages those kind of big, you know, facility improvement things. We don't have anything except for as, you know, as you do as a resident, you can vote for the bond or the loan or, you know, the appropriation, just like we do, but we don't, we don't actually plan for that. You know, and that's more of a Select Board function. So I don't want to like say, oh yeah, we endorse it and we like what, you know, being involved, but I don't want you to think that we can do things that we don't do. So that's, that's all.
That's really what we needed, because I think when we talk to Lake Sunapee, Upper Valley.
Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission.
The acronym and I always say it wrong anyway.
I used to be the executive director. I worked there for like 15 years.
I just say RPC, is that?
Yeah, RRPC.
Okay, I never say it like, we talked to Megan and Renee and all the folks. And, you know, they thought, start with the Planning Board.
Yeah, well, they're a good, they're a really good group and Vital Communities is really good. And I don't know if you're gonna use both of them, I mean, because they're...
No, I mean, and some, we're not even there yet. We just know that they have said, this, these are questions that many communities have asked. And there is like best practices for how to bring closer the work that, you know, organizations on the ground are doing and all the meetings and the, and the boards and the Select Board, not Select Board, the boards and committees are doing and spending lots of time doing, putting in hours, just to kind of bring these conversations more together. And, you know, because they have, they tend to be siloed and it is just across the board and this is a challenge. So I do appreciate though, Vicki, because, you know, obviously I'm relatively new here and so understanding the process. I am working with some other people that are more entrenched, you know, have been here a lot longer, but also not really sure how it functions, even, you know, having been here. So this is probably the most, you know, informative in our next conversation with the Select Board. But we still have to bake this. This needs a lot more. But we wanted to bring you guys in early in case that, there was some planning interest in, so that we didn't kind of come with just a plan, but that it was a collaborative process of planning. And so.
Well, I think that's a, that's a great thing. And, you know, we're happy to, you know, look at whatever you want us to look at. I mean, and I believe that, I mean, there's probably five organizations or five funds that give scholarships and assistance to individuals. I mean, you know, so CCL and ProDemic, you know, really, you know, work together in coordinating response to people in need. So that does happen. Whether or not the people know, you know, people in need know that is the other question that I think is really an important one. And that's why I said, well, how is that gonna happen? You know, that we get this information out to individuals. I mean, I look, every time I go to the post office, there's that little envelope on the bulletin board, you know, fuel assistance applications. So, you know, if a person kind of never goes to the hardware store, Stella's, or the post office, they might not know where to get the fuel assistance applications, you know, so.
And unco, yeah, and knowing how to.
So I think that that's a, you know, really worthwhile thing is to try to let them know what resources our community has.
Great.
I have another quick comment. You may not have all this information. As you're going through your talk, you say that, I think you said Enfield, Woodsville, and Vershear have gone through this kind of process. It'd be intriguing to know what kinds of outcomes came of that, because I'm thinking, you know, how do I, how does this apply to Lyme? I don't know. I don't have a clear vision of that. And if you say, well, Enfield did this, they had this meeting and they decided that they were gonna do that in Vershear and Woodsville and other towns. So if you could speak of, you know, either specifics or at least generic kinds of things that the town, as a result of this kind of process, the town came up with those ideas. I mean, that's, that's kind of a sales piece that, okay, so let, these are the kinds of things that could come out of a meeting like that?
Yeah, and that would be really important. It's like, yeah, what are the outcomes that are anticipated? For a very small community like Lyme, you know, that, you know, is well-resourced and has, you know, a lot of involved community members. Yeah, no, and I have that information. It's not at my fingertips, but it, it, Enfield's had a lot of success. And Lebanon, but which I wouldn't use as a comparative because they're very active, they're municipal paid, you know, all that. But Vershear, it could be really, really interesting to see. And I know that, you know, the fire department, you know, actually it's been a really good thing for them, I know, because they are resource limited. So, you know, what does that mean for them? And so it is, they're all very different. All towns are very different, but just that, these best practices. But those are great questions, and Vicki.
Well, does anybody have any other comments? Otherwise, I think we move on.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say that you were talking about reaching out to the people in town. I think it's been a problem forever to really get information out to everybody or the majority of people in town. We have that problem whenever we do a questionnaire. We don't really get that much response. And I think there's a lot of people alive that really don't have much to do at all with the workings of the town or what's going on in the town. So I, yeah, so I don't know what the answer is, but if you could figure out how to reach, because I, we have what, 800? No, we have 1,200 voters that are being, something like that.
And about 800 hustles.
Yeah, they say 1,200 voters, and if we get 350 responses, that's really good. So we've got, you know, barely, or a little more than a third of the people that ever respond to anything. So, yeah, so it's really hard to do a questionnaire that's really representative of the town. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, if obviously, or ideally, if we were doing a questionnaire, we would send out a stamped return, addressed envelope, but that's probably too expensive. But that would be the best, you know, to get people to respond, to do a, you know, send an envelope that's already stamped. You know, because, you know, it's just hard to get people to respond. And so many people don't do computer stuff. So you can't do it on the computer because you're gonna miss tons of people. So anyway, I just, you know, just, as I said, I don't know what the answer is, but to figure out a way to get to everybody.
Yeah, and if we're not like asking for information, but we want to share the information, then that's different. But I appreciate you guys, I know we've gone over the time.
To everybody, yeah.
If you figure out how to get in touch with that many people, sell it to the nation. Sell it to everyone. Like it's, nobody can do this. Like it's so frustrating to like, it's like common problem.
So my, like, I wasn't even, you know, I was in college and was hired. We worked with a regional planning commission and went to Vershear to do a like community attitude survey. And we were basically like staking out, you know, with like each, we were student pairs. We grab up there and stake out houses and knock on the door and, you know, see if there's a car. And then go on Saturday, knock on the door. And, yeah, I mean, so we were really diligent because that was our, our project was that we had to talk to X number of people and get their input. And, but it was kind of, you know, we were stalking those people. And, you know, some people just don't want to talk, but it took a lot of effort to kind of finesse that, to get the response rate high. And it was, it was all face-to-face, you know, survey stuff. Unless the people, unless you wanted to leave the survey off and then we would come and pick it back up to be sure that it was returned.
That's, I think surveying is really hard. That's why we're not going in the survey direction. But I, I think, no, these are, these are such great ideas. Thank you.
The other thing is, is you get a person like Patty Jenks or like Aaron, people who go and respond to people in need. And it's like in their brains are, you know, the needs in our community because they see it firsthand. And it's like, well, how do you actually get firsthand knowledge? People aren't gonna tell you how needy they are. I mean, if they don't know you or, you know, kind of. And so it's, you know, fortunately our town's small enough where we have individuals who know of individuals who need help. And it's like, I don't know how you formalize that or step aside so that, you know, it's not just that personal thing. So that's, I think, a huge question.
And that, again, we're not gonna look at needs, we're gonna look at assets. And so that those, these are really, these are great points. Thank you. Thanks you guys for the time.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And yeah, come back and let us know how it's going. And I don't know, I mean, we're not giving a formal endorsement right now, right?
I don't think we have, I don't think.
No, there is no formal ask. It's a more that we're letting you know as you're particularly knowing that you're doing the housing survey, so that this was something we wanted to share. And thank you.
Next on our agenda is the proposed driveway extension for Home on the Connecticut. And Lauren, maybe you can come and, well, actually, maybe can you just give us a little background on what we are looking at and why we're looking at it?
Okay, so the proposed driveway goes through the steep slopes conservation district. And so there is a special exception that you need to get for, to do that. Anytime you get a special exception in the steep slopes conservation district, the zoning ordinance requires a planning board review and provide comment. And so you're going to review the plans and provide comment to the zoning board of adjustment on what you think of the project and any issues that you see, any issues that you would like the zoning board of adjustment to address.
And folks have gotten a small copy. I asked David to... I asked David to ask Lauren to bring some larger copies so that we could review those. And, uh, so I don't know how mu- how many copies you brought, or whether you just have one, or what, but I think it might be helpful to.
So Lauren, you're a licensed engineer in the state of Hampshire.
Yes.
So would you stamp your plans?
These are not something that would typically be stamped.
Well, you did calculations that you submitted, so maybe, would you, would you stamp those?
I mean, I could, it, it would be atypical for an engineer to stamp this, but, I mean, fine.
Okay. I personally don't, I, I can't evaluate this. And so, knowing that an engineer prepared it and would be willing to, you know, put their stamp on it would be helpful to me. Otherwise, I would have to say, well, I think we need to have somebody who does know how to evaluate this, um, to review it. But that, that's me personally, I don't know if Rich, being an engineer, you know, feels like he can critically review these calculations, 'cause, I mean, these calculations are the basis for the design for what you proposed, physically correct? Okay, so maybe they're not.
Let, let me just talk about the overarching project, we can get down to that.
Yep, yep, yep.
So essentially, what we have here is, right now, there's this driveway that just goes straight down the slope. So, it's manageable, but it's steep. And, um, so we're trying to figure out ways to make it better. We, we looked at all sort of options in this intermediate area. But when you, when you consider the turning radius for the big equipment and you think of the slope of the hill, it just turned out that the, really, the only feasible option was this super-long one here. And there's already an old road down here, so there's, there's some cut and fill here, but this part of the road already exists. So with, w- we were able to achieve a lot of the things that the fire department was looking for, which was, um, more access around this bend, access around the back of this, the white building, and a nice, a nice gradual slope down to the bottom. So this was the fanciest Cadillac version of a driveway, but we felt like it was something that we, um, were willing to invest in, um, 'cause it made the fire department happy.
So Aaron, um, what, what is, or, or Lauren, what is the grade of the existing, of the, the, the direct driveway that's there now versus the, um, the maximum grade on the, um, proposed driveway?
It's about thirteen percent currently. And this new path would be a max of six and a half percent. That might change when, when you put it in, if you just do a s- a six and a half percent the whole way, then if you have a car and you're going up, it's sometimes more difficult. So it may be better to have it be like seven percent, and then it flattens out, so you can, like, get going, and then it flattens out, and then you can get going again. So, um, what we've done here is we, we have, it's not exactly like six and a half the whole way, it's, um, it kind of does that a little bit.
How does that work for the fire department?
It's way better than thirteen.
Okay. And is there an appropriate turnaround at the end of this bend?
At the bottom, he's got a couple spots that he has created additional access space to turn the vehicles around.
So you go in there, you can get out?
Yep.
The way it is?
Much, much better than it has been existing.
Okay, great.
And especially that cutout they did over towards the property line gives us a spot to kind of spin an engine, that the reality of engines committing down there is hopefully very low. We have fire suppression systems, we have alarm systems, we have other, other things down below in the new, the new building. But it gives us much better access, frankly, to a water source also, but much closer to the river.
So, I see that, like, part of that kind of T at the end of that driveway is designated snow storage area. Does that actually need to be cleared so that you can turn a vehicle around in that? So.
That's off the end of the.
Oh, so off the end of the parking lot is the snow storage area. And the two parking spaces that are shown there?
Yep, so that you, we have a snow blower tractor, and so you pull into the parking spots and it just shoots the snow.
Right, and is anybody gonna be parking there, though, if the fire truck needs to turn around, or what's the deal there?
There's, this is actually, this used to be a campground, and this is a, there's a road right here. So, right next to the two parking spots.
Yes, yes, yep.
So, one could use that, or this, or this, I mean, there's so many options to turn around for a fire truck.
Well, I just wanna be sure that if Aaron and these people go down there, that there's a guaranteed way for them to get in and out. And, uh, you know, to me, that should be kind of shown on the plan, just so you're clear about what needs to be, the snow needs to be removed from, so that they have access. But the, I mean, if you're, like, saying that that little road goes off and it really isn't shown here, um.
It's not, I mean.
I don't know, I've never been there, I mean, a site visit would be very helpful, but I don't, you know, so I, I don't know the land, obviously, like you do.
The existing space, we took the engine down, and, um, the concerns we have with the existing driveway are, I think we've already had those discussions, but.
Yep.
We were able to turn around the engine down there with no issue right now.
Okay.
This is only going to expand upon the space we have.
So you can turn around between the, the house and the building that is.
On the driveway, yeah.
Yeah, oh, the, what's there?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I, I took a look at it. So, and you, and you can get a, the fire trucks around that hairpin turn?
We should be fine there. The bigger concern that I have, frankly, is, um, has been pinch points of vehicles being around the side of the building. So the prior plans had, still had parking around the side of the building, so it didn't give us good access to the whole structure. I brought the Hannover Fire Chief up, we did a walk-around, trying to make sure, hey, can we get a ladder truck in here? If we get a ladder truck, how do we get it committed, how do we deal with this situation? And this plan gives us significantly more operating capacity, especially around that shoulder. Not the, the full turn, but that, around the peak that's shown, to get a ladder to the far part of the building.
Yeah, down below, yeah.
No, not down, down below the.
You mean, basically, the, the circle around surrounding, part of the, the building. There was no access back there before, this will give the fire department access.
Oh, so we're talking about the building up here, rather than, okay.
So it's going to solve several problems.
Yeah.
Not just the access down to the buildings below, but access to the, the main structure. And you're going to, because it's a driveway, you're not going to have people parking there. So when, you know, if the fire department shows up, they're not gonna have to, not have access because of parked cars. They will be able to get their truck over there, if there's a fire in that back building.
Right. So, so Lauren, it looks like, from looking at it, it looks like, I mean, I was, you know, on the ground, you're gonna have to do a lot of fill in the, in the, right where the hairpin, hairpin turn starts. 'Cause it's really steep, right in there, obviously, where the, so you might have to do a lot of fill to get it to six percent, actually.
So, we're gonna be going right into the side, and so we can adjust how we go. We're basically cutting the side of the hill off, so we can adjust how high on the hill we are, so we know how much cut we're gonna need to do.
Yeah, well, if you cut, we, yeah, and maybe take some of that fill and put it back up, yeah, a ton higher, yeah.
Yeah, so it takes it, and then, yeah, that's, that's what's here to me in this, in this print, this is the cut, the life area is the cut.
Is, uh, is there a requirement or a need for a pullover in the middle of a driveway, if it's like?
That, what is the total length of run from that to the corner?
It's like, it's like a thousand feet.
Seven, it's like seven fifty.
His, I think, I don't know the zoning.
No, the zoning requires it's over a thousand.
There'd be thousands, yeah.
So, I, I have, no joke, twenty driveways that I'm far more concerned about than this, in the community area.
So you don't think that's necessary?
I, there's no, we would not park anything in the middle. Like, if we're doing a fire attack up top, we're gonna be laying hose down and getting down to where we need to get to get water. Or we're gonna have apparatus positioned above or below, we're not gonna put something in the middle of that hill. There's just no.
So you won't, never need to, a, a tank truck would never need to pass?
If, if we put a tanker down there, we screwed up. It's brilliant, like, I, I, I can't see, this is a location where if we are actually setting up a water supply, it's probably gonna be out here at the road, and it's gonna be laid all the way into the property, and we're gonna have pumpers in between, and, um, tanker shuttle's gonna be going from brick to brick, back and forth, and dumping water at the end of the driveway, and we're gonna flow a lot of water.
So, do you have enough hose, actually, to?
We have thirty-six hundred feet of hose.
And is that, was that, have you measured this?
I have not, uh, we have mutually.
Well, okay, but I, you know, and then you have the power to pump more, more than thirty-six hundred? I mean, I don't, you know, you don't have to.
No, we go twelve hundred feet per truck. Line is always set up to have twelve hundred feet per truck, so that we can maintain NFPA-required flow at a four-inch pipe at that distance. Uh, some of the places in line, that's where the thousand-foot thing came into, is at a thousand feet, your elevation lift is so high that you're getting into friction loss and you lose pumping pressure.
Yep.
And so, uh, we could pump probably from the river all the way up that, all the way out to the road, if we had to, at good pressure. We'd have things in between, so I'm not, the biggest concern I have with any of these projects is where do we get the water from?
Right.
And where the driveway was set up and made it exceptionally hard to get anything, if, even if we just carried a portable pump down to the river, we had much less access to get something to the river. This year has taught us that, uh, water supplies that we believe were fifty-year water supplies, it's no longer valid. Even the Connecticut River isn't as consistent as it has been. So, when I look at a project like that, the two ponds that are near the side of this are in good shape, and we still have the inlet by, between Rob's and Tim's house in terms of the cover bridge, so.
So, and this has a cistern, I know that feeds the, the building, but could you tap into that, or is there a way to?
We really don't like to tap into cisterns. Uh, they're running with a fire pump, we wanna let the fire pump flow the water it has until it exhausts itself. The water and the fire's good. So we don't like to tap into cisterns unless there's a need that exceeds the volume of what the sprinkler head can do, and we have no other choice. We're much more likely to feed that fire pump, uh, from the exterior, so have our water supply set up, and we're feeding that, and let the sprinkler heads do their work. And then bring hand lines in as we have. But, again, this is a sprinkled building, um, we have an early notification with alarm systems, we have good life safety structures in place. This driveway significantly improves this.
The access you have.
Project, signi- I, I mean, the old one, like, there are places in line where, um, we start a fire truck down in the winter, and the first conversation I'm having with dispatch is, send Lime Highway and possibly Sablon Suns, 'cause we may not get out of here. Uh, I felt that way more about the old driveway, I don't feel that way with the grade he's talking about on the other side.
Yeah, 'cause with new driveway, I mean, the zoning ordinance states it can't be over eleven, it can't be over eleven percent grade in any hundred feet, so.
And I've got twenty of those in town that are far steeper than that.
Well, the fact is that we have them doesn't mean it's good.
No.
And it puts you guys at risk, and our equipment at risk, and the property at risk, so we shouldn't have them, that's really the bottom line, we don't wanna make.
And six percenters, I will have to look, I, I believe all of our engines at this point are set that it can be, no, I can't remember if it's nose-up or nose-down, up to eight percent, to actually still pump. So even if this is, and for some reason, we are in the middle of that, which I can't, we really don't like to pump on hills.
Yep.
The first thing that goes in a fire truck is that sits there is, uh, a braking system. So there's nothing like a runaway fire truck when it's supposed to be pumping. We don't like to do that.
Should be using as a relay pumper.
Yeah, the relay pumper suddenly getting much closer to the bottom pumper is not a good thing, dude.
So you love this plan?
I don't love any plan ever.
Okay, well.
If we're being honest, 'cause I, there's, I like this plan significantly more.
You don't hate this plan.
Okay, all right, all right. This plan is going to work for you and is the best outcome that you can see?
This is significantly better than anything I've seen.
Okay.
And we talked about the middle, I mean, Lauren and I, we, we met many times with, uh, fire marshals and other fire chiefs, just trying to say, hey, what's a good solution here? Would I like to see a hundred-yard parking lot at the bottom? Sure. Do we have that? No. Can we turn a truck around? Yes. And if we have problems where, hey, we have committed an engine to the bottom and it's snowing like crazy, highway will come out and they'll sand for us, like they always have. And worst-case scenario, we're banging on doors and saying, anything with your car? If people are parked in stupid spots, it's not, um.
Yeah, or leave the truck there until it snow melts.
I have a harder time getting to the driveway parking lot right now, so.
Yeah. So, so maybe, Aaron, when, when the driveway's being built, you might go out and take a look, well, you know, just to double-check and make sure, well, it's.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer.
No, but I mean, you can tell, you can tell by looking at it.
Yeah, I, maybe, I, yeah, if the plan is followed, I don't see us having concerns. I, I, I don't wanna get in the, we have enough going on, I don't wanna get in the assigned following up. I think that frankly is more to David's role. If it's something that's concerned to be followed up on, I think it's probably a town zoning follow-up over ours. If it's not meeting the, the requirements of the plan, I think it's more from his side than mine.
Absolutely.
You know, maybe David can take a look here.
Yep.
Okay.
I have, I, I have just a few comments. I don't see, um, a radius on the, on the turn there, but I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that, uh, that that be outlined and, and run past Aaron, 'cause you probably have something that'll let you know.
We take the truck out. And we, we know the turning radius of the vehicles, we go to, in any of these standards, we take our vehicle that has the worst possible turning radius, and we try to set everything to that, which is why we did the site visit, we took the engine that had the worst turning areas.
Okay.
So.
So, so that puts Lauren in a situation where he builds it and it may not be okay until you run the truck on it? I mean, that's, that's, you know, he's.
We did the turn as it was before, so if you look at the, is this the original corner, Lauren, here? So as you come down and make that corner right there,
Yep.
we were making that corner. Was it great? No, because the grade of that was cut away.
Yep.
So we actually had left rear wheel lift, if you took it.
Yep, yep.
Like, really wide, which we tend to do in the winter, you can take a much more aggressive line in the summer months, but, and you look at the two, two structures, I mean, that's much more, that's a much more broad sweep than what we had there in that corner. So, I, again, it's.
Are you talking about this, you're talking about the hairpin turn?
No, I'm talking about where the original.
The original, you know, the nine, nine-three versus.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this, this driveway was, was hard. But that, you won't have to worry about that anymore.
No, but I'm saying we made that.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, so you think this, so you think this turn will be fine?
I, looking at it, I mean, when we were out there with, um, walking through the corner and looking at it, you know, our, our only concern was the proximity to the building, but he was gonna shade out away from that and open up some of the inside, too, so. Worst case, I would assume, hey, you can shave off a little bit more on the inside of that corner to create some buffer zones, to create, hey, a little bit of snow, the banks are pushed, whatever, to get, get into that flow, so, again.
Make it a little wider.
I'm not the engineer, but I, I feel better about all of this aspect, and everyone that's looked at it from my side feels better about this.
I, I, I guess I'm just, I kind of feel like the, the plan should have a radius on it, and that should be confirmed, so that when it gets built, it, it is actually built to what the design was requested. I had a, a couple other questions, the, uh, the, the existing stor- I guess there's a storm drain, there's a buried pipe that, that go, that currently goes underneath that corner, and, um, it seems like that should. and, um, it seems like that should probably be identified, the size, um, and, um, my guess is you may end up hitting it when you start cutting and filling there, um, but it, it feels to me like that should be, that should be sized and, and indicated on the plans. And likewise, at the very bottom of the ditch, um, I, I can't really tell what you have, um, designed here for, uh, for the outlet of this, of all of this drainage that's coming down. But it feels to me like there should be some sort of a, um, uh, I forgot the term.
Should be dimensioned, and, you know, the volume, and, you know, did the calculations for some reason, but there's no translation to say that what you've shown here is gonna handle all that, 'cause it's not sized.
A lo- I mean, I'm thinking of a level spreader or something like that to accommodate the.
Well, it's in the slope, what kind of soils are that hillside?
Sandy clay.
Which are prone to, when they saturate, they, they slump, so they're not the best soils to actually drain water onto at all. I mean, if you look at that bank that was, if I crawl that, you know, the press that went down.
Yeah.
It's the same stuff, it's lake bottom, sandy clay, that, um, but it should be something more than, I don't know.
It should have some dimensions on it.
It should have dimensions, and it probably should be built laterally again with the grade rather than, um, you know, in terms of how it holds water. I just wondered, did anybody go on the existing stormwater outlet, what's the condition below that? And is there, you know, erosion, is there a channel there, because?
There's almost no water at all. I've, I've never seen water flow out the culvert at the bottom.
Okay, that's good.
I guess the other question I had was, I'm, um, I'm not a runoff guy, but, um, it surprises me that the, that the, that the post-construction, um, flow is less than the pre-construction flow, and I'm just wondering how that happens, 'cause it looks to me like you're concentrating all your flow, bringing it down this ditch and sending it close.
Well, it's not a typical ditch, it's, it's, it's big, it's stone, so the whole thing percolates. There's gonna be almost, I mean, there's basically no runoff, but this is all vegetation, there's no water that goes down to zero, so, I, I mean, there's really no, there's, there's no water. So, we have this ditch, and the only thing that this ditch is collecting is from the crown of the middle of the road over. So, I mean, your watershed is this wide.
Well, it's picking up the, the whole hill here.
This is, it's all, it's just sand, this is all just a sandy hill, and it's, it's all veget- it's thick vegetation, so everything percolates, I've never seen, never seen any water move at all, anywhere. I mean, I've run the, the lawnmower up and down this hill, and, and it's, so the, it's completely denuded of vegetation, and there's still no erosion.
And even with, even with the big thunderstorms, you don't get anything coming down this, uh, down this road? That, that does exist, doesn't it?
No, I mean.
Come on, guy, it's, it's more than, we have, we have weather events that cause snow melt, we get rain on top of snow, and we get a lot of water, and the fact that it hasn't happened doesn't mean that we should say, oh, it's not gonna happen. I mean, we're in the job of planning, and our climate events are, are getting more extreme, so, I mean, so.
As a civil engineer, this ditch has been designed to more than exceed the requirements for, uh, channel capacity of the, of any stormwater flow.
And what's the sizing for your, at the, um, collecting pipe and the outlet?
We sized the culvert, and this is just kind of a gently sloping, the thought was, you know, we'll put some gravel, and it just, the water just kinda goes, this is just a field, it's an agricultural field, it's not a big deal if it, you know, and so the water just comes down, but when we run the calc, there's just not much water getting there, so.
Okay, so.
This is, if you look at this, this whole area here, that's pretty flat, so it all just seeps into the ditch. So there's just, by the time, I mean, it's coming down, if there's any water and it's coming down this hill, it flattens out, and it's going s- super slow and not moving at all. So, let's say there's just, there's a hurricane and it's building up, and it's gonna come, it's gonna go down here, it's gonna come out, and it's gonna s- splay out.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking, your ditch is a, a foot deep, okay, and, um, of course, it's gonna get filled in with vegetation, and I don't know how often you wanna replace that, um, and what's the surface of your, your new driveway?
Just crush and run, the twin pack.
So, Aaron, Lauren, on the uphill side, where it's really steeped, you probably won't have a retaining wall, right? You're just gonna slope it back from the driveway?
Yeah, so we'll cut the slope to three to one, we'll pound in the first layer of stone, and then place the stone on top of that pounded layer.
Right, so it doesn't, yeah, 'cause it'll be, yeah, you'll have a wall, I mean, you'll have a high wall there with the, you know, upside of the driveway.
Just, it'll be sloped at three to one.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a cross-section of what you intend to, how you intend to do the driveway?
The, anything that's cut will have a three-to-one slope down to the ditch.
Okay, no, I'm talking about cross-section of the road, the new road surface. So you're gonna cut into the existing dirt, and what do you have for subbase, and what's the, you know, surface?
The contractor has a, they use some fabric, I don't, I don't know the, the spec.
Yeah, 'cause it'd be good to have that, just so that you're putting it out to bid, that make sure that that's what's being built.
Yeah, he'll have to, he'll have to cut it like this. You know, this is a slope.
Yeah.
It's, it's about what it is, so he'll have to cut this.
Right, I'm like, what I'm saying is, is what is the, what's the cross-section of the road itself?
Yeah.
So it's got, you know, some no, some amount of gravel crushed on the top, and then there's a subbase, and then is there geotextile, and where's the pounding, you know, what is the construction of that road? 'Cause it needs to be significantly in place, I, I'm concerned, because sand and salts, they tend to erode, and, um, you, you don't wanna have it, and I wondered about the vegetation, and is it all, is this all just field here? Or is there a tree line, or?
Where it is all field.
It's all field.
As example, like, this is the same material, the same.
You know, I get that, I don't, that doesn't help me, I just wanted to know what are you disturbing along this new road? Is it just all meadow grass, or is it trees, or?
It's meadow grass.
Okay.
Yeah, it's low stuff.
Okay, and, and which you've been mowing anyway, and what about, what's the vegetation on the slope down to the river?
It's meadow on one side and trees on the other.
So it's all wooded, and how much are you cutting into the wooded area? There's no tree line shown, so I, I don't really know.
There are trees there where he's gonna cut it.
No trees.
There's those big pines.
Big pines, that's it.
Yeah.
On the corner?
Six or seven big pines.
On the way down the driveway, I think it's gonna be to the right of the driveway.
Are you talking here?
Yeah, yeah, the big pines.
Yeah, there, yeah, it's like.
Yeah, I'm not really concerned about those, I was concerned about any, you know, larger vegetation that's on the slope down toward the river.
No, there's none.
None, okay, great, that's great, okay. Um.
I mean, we have the same ditch spec on the steep driveway, and there's no erosion, no issues. We've had big storms, I mean, so now we have a, a longer, less steep, uh, situation. Seems like it should be even, you know.
Well, it's, I mean, I'm glad it makes Aaron happy, because it seems like a huge expense, and it's too bad to have to tear up that much of your site to accommodate that situation, but I am hundred percent supportive of our emergency services and getting in there safely, so.
Well, it, it should make it easier for you, Lauren, I would think, for people living down there, because this, this existing driveway is so steep, there must have been some times in the winter when it was not easy to get up and down there.
Well, it's just that one household, not, right, so.
Well, there's the house, are you living in the house? You live in the house?
We, not currently, we were, but we're not.
So if somebody's in the house, and you have two apartments, three, how many apartments in the other one?
Will be three.
Yeah, but I mean, people living there, yeah, so it'll help, if this dri- the new driveway's less steep, it definitely will be easier for you guys, 'cause looking at that driveway, I mean, there was some time in the winter when it would not, I mean, obviously you had the four-wheel drive, even a four-wheel drive getting down would not be easy, yeah.
So, I, I think we're saying, um, that we would recommend, um, showing the, the radius of the curve, uh, providing a, a cross-section for the driveway.
Yep.
Um.
Sizing for the.
Sizing in detail of, of the, uh, um, receiving area for, for that cross, um, culvert.
Right, and, uh, I don't see any erosion control for when you're, um, constructing this?
The thought was, if we can get this, if we can get this through at the next meeting, we cut it one day, we stone it that afternoon, we plant grass on it, and we water it, and that's it. I can do, I can do more, there's, it's just meadow down below, um, that vegetation, it, it's super thick vegetation throughout the whole thing, um, and the grass grows really, really well on this well-drained soil, so.
Does the zoning board typically, in any special exception where this, you know, any type of construction like this, they will require, um, you know, best management practices for erosion control? That's one of their standard requirements?
The, that's fine, but what his idea of best management is, like, sneaking in between storms, and so if there's.
No, what I'm saying, I don't care what he says, the zoning board will require that, you know, best management practices, which is a, you know, there is a standard, uh, best management practices by the, um, New Hampshire DOT.
Well, it's a thick book, and the question is, is what would actually be used here, and, and who's gonna make sure that that's done? I mean, what, what bothers me is that, okay, we have the existing, and then we have this thing, and it magically happens, and things don't magically happen, um, there's a lot of, you know, rubbing and earth removal and cutting that, that needs to occur, and things, the equipment breaks, a storm comes in, and, you know, you're kinda then caught with a unintended situation, so erosion control should be implemented, and if it's required, it would be nice to know what Lauren had in mind for the best management practice, just so, um, there's an understanding about what might happen, rather than, you know, the weather's been great for it now, but, um, it's gonna rain, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, it looks like this is, you know, anywhere is from fifty to over a hundred feet wide of disturbed area, so, I mean, um, I.
Yeah, I mean.
I kinda doubt that this is something that you can build this year unless you start tomorrow. I don't, I don't know what this hearing is, but.
Sixteenth is, uh, the zoning board hearing.
So.
I'm hoping, I'm having trouble getting numbers, but I think we got a forum.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, hopefully you can do it, so you're gonna try to get the driveway in this fall?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you have the two excavators here. So you use, you do that yourself, or you have somebody?
No, Eastman Trucking Excavation.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I've seen their trucks now.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we have any other comments, or?
So, um, I just wanna know, um, are any of these soils that you're running over agricultural soils?
No, I've checked.
So none, and I don't know if that one's anything like that, so it's all just steep slope?
Yeah.
And is any of this in the Shoreline Protection District, or the state, two hundred fifty feet from the?
I think we're two hundred, you're, I didn't check them for the state.
Oh, you?
Yeah, but that's, you know.
That's, that's important?
Yeah.
'Cause this is a designated water body, and if it's within two hundred fifty feet, I think you have, um, an obligation to, at least tell the state you're doing it. I mean, there's a certain amount of disturbed area, and I don't know exactly what that is, so, and I don't know how far two hundred fifty feet is, and how much disturbed area, but you might wanna make sure you don't need a state permit.
I don't know, it's hard to tell, it's, it may be close to two hundred fifty feet.
Well, it's really hard when you have a s- slope to measure horizontal distance, so.
Yes, to the river, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, you know, measured from a certain, uh, high-water mark or a certain elevation of the river, which is probably, I don't know what, what they're keeping the river at now, but that, you don't wanna get, forget that. So it looks like one, two, three, four, five things.
So I have the, the radius, the cross-section of the driveway.
Yep.
Um, the size, um, and, and detail of the receiving area for the, um.
The storm drain.
The storm drain.
Yep.
And, um, I can't read my writing, um.
Erosion control, yeah, and then, uh, there's a state permit needed.
Yeah, from the state permit, just, uh.
Yep, yep, all I had.
Good, anybody else? Well, thank you, Lauren, thank you, Aaron, for coming in.
Yeah. Thank you for being happy, Aaron.
Hey, I.
Well, it's good.
Yeah, it's a lot better than what we have now, I can picture a day right now where we went ahead of this project on the existing one, and we turned that corner, start down over, and it's snowing, and we end up parking in the building, so, I like this.
Yeah, good.
Definitely put it out.
It would, it would put out some things, it would definitely not put out Dina's frustration, that would definitely start.
Yeah, the insurance claims would.
Yeah, that would not be a fun thing for.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna make that phone call myself.
Dear Dina.
And I, I guess I do wanna say, I, I appreciate getting eleven-by-seventeen prints, 'cause they're all just.
Recording in progress.
Sorry about that, it just.
Oh, my goodness.
It stopped for some reason.
Um, just, they're easier to deal with, and, uh, you know, getting them all, like, do, do you also?
Well, he gave them to me electronically, I printed them off eleven-by-seventeen, 'cause our, our new photocopier actually is also a printer, and I can do the eleven-by-seventeens on.
Then I, then, then I thank you too, David, that's, that's really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you, Lauren.
Do you want this? Are we, are you, are you keeping these for the board, or?
I'll keep a copy of the file.
Yeah, why don't I keep copies, so we can, I can bring those to the zoning board on the sixteenth, and that'll. And I will mention once again, that for these keep slope reviews, if there was a, um, written down, or, you know, some sort of definition of what the board would like for plans, or, or what they wanna review, the questions they, you know, that, that type of thing would be real helpful to be able to give people ahead of time, so that they have everything.
Well, having a profile for something like this would have been helpful.
Yeah, so, in, um, having that, you know, say, you would like plans, and these things on the plans, you know, something, you know, written by the board that says, you know, that I can give to an applicant that says, here is everything that the board really would like to see, and. like to see, and, okay, so you have a, you're not doing a driveway, so you don't need a driveway profile, you know, that type of thing, fine, but, you know, a list of items.
Yep.
You know, very much like a site plan or a subdivision, you know, you, you have whole sections of information that you asked for, and having that up front would be a, a great help to people. And I know you don't do many of these, you know, maybe one a year, but it's still something to consider.
All right.
So is it, it's probably not gonna happen, but is there any possibility with the ZBA have, being able to go a site visit before their meeting?
Probably not.
Because I don't think you can really do this intelligently without seeing it.
They may look at it and say, say they wanna go do a site visit, do a scheduled one.
I, I would, I would, I would have benefited from a site visit, for sure.
Wasn't, wasn't there one scheduled? Didn't you have a site visit today?
Nah, no, we had one yesterday.
Yesterday.
Well, we didn't have a scheduled one, because it would have had to have been noticed.
Right, right. If you have more than two people, you can, it has to be a news meeting, so, but maybe you could just shoot an email out to the way the ZBA and say, if you believe that you can go out there.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
Take a look.
I can do that.
Because it's not till the sixteenth, right?
Right.
So that's a bit of time, I think.
Till week half.
Yeah, so they should be able to.
I mean, I, I, I think, you know, in, in Lauren's defense here, I mean, he's, he's provided much of what you would find in an engineered plan, you know, I mean, the, he's got his finished contours in there, you know, i- if, if we'd had a, a larger scale plan that we could actually scale off, we could have taken those, you know, figured a hundred feet and, and figured out the slopes. You know, I think, I think it's pretty customary for somebody to have a cross-section of, of the road, so we know that there's either a foot of gravel, or six inches of gravel, or no gravel, um.
But not everybody is an engineer coming before the board, you know, oftentimes it is a homeowner.
Right.
Who is.
Well, it's not, no.
And, well, again.
To know what they're putting into the road.
Right, but that's why I'm saying, if I can have a, you know, it's very hard for me to tell somebody, the board is going to want this, but I don't have anything written down to give you. I have no, nothing that says what they want, I'm just telling you.
Well, it's, it's, it's a simple, like, so that we know what's going to be built, show us what's going to be built, whatever it is. So, it, you know, it's, mine, I, you know, could, a felt carpet could be put down through the roof, or, you know.
Yeah.
But of course, that's not, but who knows what?
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, you know, having it as a, you know, something I can give an applicant.
Show us what is going to be built, you know, because.
But then, you know, they come with a napkin, with a, you know, some vague guns.
You might have a cross-section of the road, I don't know.
I don't, I just, it, it would be, I'm just telling you, it would be helpful to me and to applicants to have that information ahead of time, so that they know what to expect.
Well, yeah.
Yes. You know, it's in the subdivision regulations, the site plan review regulations, all have that information right there, and it's very easy to, you know, I, and, you know, I can tell people, you know, if you don't have this, the board's not gonna be happy with this. That's all.
Okay. Next item is our minutes.
Yeah. I'll, I'll put you, I'll put you, uh, when we, we'll write up the, the, these are recommendations to the zoning board, and so those are going to be, I'll give you a copy.
Let's, let's do the most recent meeting of September eleventh. One clarification under item one, first paragraph. The board's jurisdiction is for cutting trees that are over fifteen inches in circumference as opposed to diameter.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think that.
That was the only thing I saw.
Circumference? I'm not questioning it, I'm just surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, it's easier to measure circumference, I guess.
It's, that's the way it's written in this, in the statute.
Right, no.
As opposed to, I mean, at the meeting, we were talking about a five-inch tree, so, pi d is five times three.
Yeah, because fifteen inches diameter is a big tree.
Well, yes, no, but I.
Yeah, but fifteen inches is only.
But on diameter, it's a much bigger tree than it is on top of it, so.
Right, no, I think, I, I was just surprised that, but that's easier to measure it, too.
Yeah.
Instead of.
It's easy to get the diameter.
You know, yeah, once it's cut, or you can just drill right through the middle of it.
You know, it's just simple math.
Yeah.
That you, you can measure around.
Well, it's got pi, and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just disturbing the, the conversation here, I, I wasn't here, so I, I shouldn't say much.
Any other comments or concerns?
I don't have any concerns.
I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. So, so move it. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
And then, I think since, you weren't here, were you?
Yeah.
Oh, you were, okay, so we have a, a forum here.
I was though.
You were.
The move up.
The designated.
Yes.
You're the alternate.
Exactly.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As I have abstaining, or is it here?
No, abstaining is false.
Two abstentions, okay. So do we also have a, a set of minutes from the twenty-eighth that we need to approve? And can we approve those?
Yes.
They're not stale?
No, they're not stale. I did not print out a copy.
I have a copy here.
But I can.
So, uh, how do we wanna deal with this? Who, who was present at that meeting? Tim and I, Ricky, Nat?
Okay. They were all here.
Everybody was here, okay.
Dave Kahn was the only one, based on the minutes, which could be wrong.
Yeah, no, that's right, he was, yeah, where is David Kahn? He's missing in action.
Well, can I jump a board?
So, um, does, does anybody wanna take a look at this, or do you have a good recollection that, uh?
I have no memory, whatever, so that's.
You have a long time.
They're very short, there.
Yeah, they're short and sweet.
Oh, there we go.
Very dear for the.
Seems pretty non-conventional.
See, I didn't, I couldn't find the, I tried.
Well, they said you were, but.
So do you, do you wanna, uh, give us a minute, a proposal to accept those minutes as, as written?
I'd move that we accept them.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So those can get distributed wherever they go.
Yes.
Number approved, so.
Our housing survey discussion. Uh, we have now a version that was updated on September eleventh. I, I think we're good to go.
I had a couple.
But I think we should probably just go through one last time. It, it, it occurs to me that this should probably have, this document needs to have a title. And, and I don't.
Draft Housing Questions.
And it's not Draft Housing Questions, maybe it's Seeking Your Attitudes About Housing Development in Line.
I thought that's what it was.
And maybe that.
And, and that, I mean, in fact, do we wanna talk about, what does the cover letter say on the note that goes out to the list, to the survey? You know, if we're gonna send, I.
Well, if you're gonna send, if you're gonna do a cover letter, realtor, you should send it in with the, the survey also, you know, this is, you know, the electronic replies are only one, uh, reply, that there's intent to send this through the mail, so that, you know, that people should get the same information.
I, yeah, I think he's, Dave's, I support him a hundred percent.
I thought that this was the cover letter.
It is sort of.
This is it.
Okay. I, I support, I support that, if, if this becomes the cover letter.
Well, it is the cover letter, we have, it's signed here.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, it's a letter.
All right, good job.
It just, it bleeds on, because we have these other, you know, stuff at the top that will go away.
In terms of order, should, should we then have our map and our short narratives about every district?
That's in here.
I know, but should it come after the cover?
You know, that's a good point, I, I was kinda assuming.
Just so that it's not randomly tucked into the, you mean, list of questions.
Directly, even in the envelope, it'll be put right underneath the cover letter.
Well, this may be.
Okay, that'd be fine, you know, that's, that's all I'm asking, yeah. Is something, so that they have their reference material and their questions, so that they don't have to, so it doesn't have to be complicated trying to figure out why, why certain things are in certain places.
So, so, my off-the-cuff, initially I thought, yeah, when you mentioned that, my initial thought was, yeah, we should, we should probably put the definitions and then the, and then the zoning map right behind this cover letter. However, that might just turn some people off, and maybe we should do a little, get them hooked with the first two questions.
Okay, you could, you could certainly say, see, uh, see appendix for.
Oh, sure.
That would be another way.
That would be another way, yeah.
That, I, I had that very sense, so I look at the front page, okay, yup, yup, this is all this happy stuff they're telling us.
And then you got two pages of homework to read.
Well, then, well, no, it was worse than that, because I see questions one and two, and then I see all this stuff about description, lots, and this is, and then, and so I think the questions should all be together, question one, two.
Yeah.
Right.
Three, four, five, you know, whatever.
So let's put it on the back, and.
And then, yeah.
And that way people can get into the need of it, and for those that need to be educated on where the different zoning districts are, they can find that at the back. I, I like that, yeah.
So what's the Tenson Farm called now, Record Ridge Farm, isn't it called Levinson, or what do they call it?
There's, it's written on the sign out there, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, yeah. Yeah, so, 'cause I have, when I did the district descriptions, I just put a question mark in it, it's like, what is that called now? Maybe we just take out those question marks then?
Yeah, they, they haven't owned it for fifty years yet, so it's not really an official name.
Okay, so we take out those question marks, so in the line common districts, so we just say former Record Ridge slash Tenson Farm.
Yeah.
And period, and then on page four, number four at the top, zoning districts was misspelled, there's just like that, you in there? Where?
Oh.
Page four, number four.
The last word of the sentence.
Number four, districts is misspelled.
Destriks?
Yes.
Well, the other thing on, I had, on number four, the location of the housing units in the line is also of significant importance, something has to go in there.
What, where are you?
The location of the, uh, number four, the location of the new housing units in the line.
Oh, yeah.
In line.
In line.
Oh, just take out, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay, takes care of that. But now, shouldn't.
Okay, go ahead.
What was I saying, on the cover letter, I mean, shouldn't we say something like, you know, where it says, ser- uh, surveys available online, the paper versions available to library, then we should say, paper versions will be mailed.
I gotta get, I gotta get the address from Dave, where, where to send.
Right, well, anyway, we, will be mailed to every household at line, if returning by mail, send to, and then the address.
Yep.
And then there will be a box, maybe if we decide to do this, a box for drop-off at the town offices, the Lime Country Store, and the library. I mean, that's up to, but I, you know, if we wanna do a place where people can drop off, so they don't have to mail them, put a stamp on it, then it might be nice to have a box, you know, someplace. Did we do that with the solar survey?
The library, there was a drop box at the library.
But we could have one here easily, right, at the town office?
Oh, yeah, put one out in the foyer.
That would be really easy, too. I don't know about the Lime Country Store, they, they don't have much room.
No.
So maybe we should forget that, maybe here.
Right here? Po box one twenty-six. At a district, the line planning board, po box one twenty-six.
But anyway, my feeling is that we should have that information.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
And then you can say, every adult house, household member should feel free to answer.
Paper versions can be mailed to po box one twenty-six, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Drop boxes.
There will be drop boxes.
At the library.
And the town offices.
And the town office, yeah.
Drop off box.
And we want, we wanna give a date, please return the survey by.
That's a bit bold. Now, David, did we decide we're putting one copy in each one, or are we gonna send two for husband and wife?
No decision, um, I think, I need to check with the post office if they're, so we use a, I forget the, the term, I'm losing it.
They have a fancy name.
You drop in, you drop it in every box.
EMV or something.
And there may be a weight limitation on that, because we've got a bulk rate for doing that, you know, basically, we give them everything, you know, enough to fill the, all the peel boxes in line center, and all the numbers, and I, all I do is I call Robin and say, hey, how many?
It's very close, right.
Um, postal patron check.
Yeah, it would sure be nice if we could, if we were able to do two copies, because in many, many households, there's gonna be two people filling them out, and to make, somebody make a copy, which is not always easy, it, it really is important, I think, to send two.
Again, let me check the postal patron.
Okay.
I didn't know we could send something to the big postal patron.
What?
Well, even just one copy is, is big.
Good.
E.
Every door.
Direct mail, yeah, E D D M.
Every door.
So the actual survey, it looks like it's, um, four pages or two back-to-back.
Yeah, and we, I would recommend doing.
Plus, plus, plus the map.
Plus the map.
Well, but then, if we decide the map and the description of the zoning districts is an appendix.
You'd only need one per envelope.
It's one page, one, one, one sheet, two sides.
Right.
But you'd only need to send, it wouldn't have to be part of every survey. If you're wrapping the envelope, you could stick one of those in each envelope.
Yeah, you just send the two copies of the, of the actual survey, and then, yeah.
So then you're talking about nine, nine pages, so you have to figure out how ni- much nine pages weighs.
Yeah, which is easy enough, too.
Nine.
Two times four, plus one.
But are we doing front and back, or not?
Yeah.
Really, so there's eighteen times.
Well, when you have two, two copies.
Two copies.
Oh, oh, right, duh, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but not the ma- the map and the.
Just one.
Yeah, I guess.
Two times four, which is the survey, plus one.
Eight, nine, yep, okay.
But it's actually two times two. There's only two pieces of paper for the survey.
This is exponential.
There are?
Yeah.
With front and back.
If you print it front and back.
It's, it's seven pages, it's, it's six pages.
But that includes the description of the zoning district.
Oh, I see, I see, so it's six pages, so it's three, it's sub, it'll be three, because you have the cover sheet, the cover letter.
Right, but the actual survey is just page two, page four.
Four, two, yep, you're right.
Page five.
Yeah, so that's a lot, because nine pages.
And page six.
A lot.
So how many pages are you calculating, just?
So two times two is four.
Yeah.
Plus the cover is five.
Plus.
Plus a back-to-back for the zoning.
Six.
Six, six pages.
Six.
That's much better, yeah.
It's better.
Because the standard envelope for, if I remember this correctly, um, is up to is up to an ounce, which is four pages. So this is going to be.
Ounce and a half.
An overweight.
Just another thing, um, putting the zoning district boundary, um, descriptions on the backside of the map isn't very helpful, because you can't look at both sides at the same time.
That's true.
So maybe the zoning map could go up front and on the map we could say district boundaries are at the end.
Put the, put the map on the backside of the letter.
Of the cover letter, yes.
Yes, yeah, and then have the, and you know, if you wanted a verbal description, you go to the.
Appendix is descriptions.
So, if I understand, if we've got the cover letter and the map.
Yep.
We have two sheets, four sides of survey, and then a final, um, another, a final sheet with just one side of the descriptions.
With a description, yeah.
The zoning districts, okay. Chat G P T says four pages is three times, two thirds of an ounce.
Three.
Plus the envelope.
On page two.
Yeah.
Right.
True.
And a stamp.
I think that should.
Oh, no, it just says postal patron, no stamp.
Right, on page two, this should be number three.
We have two number twos.
We have two number twos.
Yep.
So that.
Yeah, now this was, you know, yeah.
Okay, and I had one other question or comment. On number five, five A, you think it's a good idea to mix housing with art, with commercial uses in this district? David, didn't, hasn't the state already changed that? I think they have. I mean, we're forced to have housing in commercial now.
Yes, you're forced to have housing in commercial. You can't have commercial only.
Right, so this question may not be appropriate.
Well, the, the zoning also, the, the two commercial, or three commercial districts in town also allow housing, so it's not, we're not.
Was ours, so the state changed, but we already had it.
Right, we were ahead of the state.
Take question and five out altogether, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, maybe, no, maybe we can, I mean, it's allowed now to have housing with the commercial.
I don't think we wanna take that.
So we're just asking, is it a good idea?
Well, I mean, and that, five B is a sort of a different question, what kind of housing?
But that's actually the only question we need to know the answer to.
So we just.
So, so just make five A, say, you know, mixed housing and commercial uses are already permitted in a, the commercial district.
Right.
What form of housing would you locate in the commercial district?
Yeah, what form of housing should be, do you think should be located?
Yeah, so you're, you're actually.
It makes it clear.
You're only talking about the commercial district, not the commercial districts. There are three districts that are, there's commercial allowed. Line common, line center, and the commercial district.
Well, what was the intent of the question? Was it to?
It was my question, I can tell you exactly what.
Okay, go for it.
The intent is, um, the, the town has, in the past, had a lot of people complaining that we don't have any place for commercial. We need to have commercial in order to lower the tax base. And.
This doesn't work.
And so the question would be, well, okay, we've got commercial, should we keep it primarily commercial, or should we, um, use part of it for housing and thus reduce the amount of, of space available for commercial activity?
If that was the question, it certainly is hidden. I mean, why not ask it in a more, uh, direct, direct way? I mean, if it really had to do with tax base and, you know.
Well, I don't think we wanna get into the whole issue of tax base.
But, but it's better to get into that than ask a question that is really opaque.
I don't think it's really that opaque.
It's, it's the simplest way to do it without getting people thinking about tax implications.
But they should be thinking about tax implications in order to answer it. Yeah, but, but we don't know what those.
It's a preference for lifestyle.
And my feeling is, it doesn't lower the tax ba- taxes, but.
So you think it's a lifestyle question?
I do.
Would you think it's okay if you live next to a commercial enterprise?
Yes, yes.
But, but that, it really depends on the developer. I mean, the developer knows he can do either just commercial, or he can do housing and commercial.
This is in the district, not on the lot, though.
Right, in the district.
Well, this says it on the district, so which is the same, but what you're saying is on the same lot.
Right, but in other words, whoever's doing the development is gonna decide whether they wanna have just commercial or, you know, I don't think we can stop it. We can't say to them, oh, you can't have residential limit.
Then why are we asking the question?
Okay, because, because Rich wants to know, and, um, so.
So we're asking.
So let's, let's ask the question and see, the town, the town of Lime's commercial district is shown on the zoning map. So, not above anywhere.
Yeah, right.
Housing is allowed in this district. What form of housing should be located in the commercial district? Check as many as you wish.
Yeah, that's true. Housing being already allowed, I guess we don't need to get into the tax base question, because it's already allowed. So then the question is just what form of, of housing should we put there, do you know? But, but do we have that say, if somebody, if a developer comes in and says, I'm gonna build?
Yes.
We can tell him what kind of housing to put there.
Well, single family duplex.
Because right now, it's, all right, okay, I got it.
Certainly, you, you would only be able to put one single dwelling.
Right.
Per building, you know?
So it's a valid question.
Yeah.
You're right.
Rich, does it take everything out of what you cared about?
I, I guess I just have a hard time thinking that, oh, well, we'll muck up our commercial district with housing, so that then we go down the road and we designate another area as commercial, and all of a sudden we have strip development.
Okay, so should we say none, and say no housing should be, what form of housing should be located in the.
But we can't do that because of the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, they have the right.
Well, trying to get to, you know, somebody who felt the way Rich might be thinking could say none. But.
But we, no, we're not allowed to say none anymore.
Well, there we can't, it's now we can't say none.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm fine if, if people think, if, if this is a inappropriate question or changing to what E B.
I, I think this becomes, gets out.
I think we wanna ask this question.
Yeah, I think it's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it brings out the, the, a bigger question of, in the commercial district, would you like to see larger housing developments? Or, you know, saying, instead of, you know, you, you have the, the number of dwellings, right now, you could have, you know, build a new building, you could put one dwelling unit. And if you're getting people saying, oh, we should put six to thirty, sixteen to thirty, in, allow it in anywhere, then, you know, that's a big difference than what's allowed now. And I think it's a valid, a very valid question.
I think hardly anybody is gonna think it through and say, well, if we have all this residential and the commercial, we won't have room for commercial, so we might have, you know, what Rich is saying. I don't think anybody's gonna slip that.
Okay, but the thing is, you know, is, you know, we, we see changes, you know, originally, um, you look at eighty-five Dartmouth College Highway, it was.
Mixed.
Is, a lot of mixed use, but there was, you know, safety was there, they had, you know, well over a hundred employees.
Restaurant, yeah.
Restaurant, um, and now that's changed to, you know, a, a school and housing.
Yeah.
Um, in ten years, twenty years from now, um, that, you know, people could buy those condos and put commercial back into it. Or they could buy one of the lots, put housing in it now, and then the, the need for commercial gets greater, and it gets converted to commercial because it's allowed. So I think.
But there's also the potential that it becomes sort of a sub-village, you know, and, and ends up being, you know, to some extent, a hub for people who wanna commute to Hanover, say, or something like that.
Wouldn't that be nice, you know? I mean, for people who live at, like, an all-hairant farm, to be able to have a restaurant or a retail thing, so they don't have to go all the way to Lime Village, and don't have to go all the way into Hanover if they wanna loaf of bread.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that might be the way that they would read the question.
Yep.
Was, but you weren't thinking that when you wrote.
No, no.
So I think Rich. So should we, should we alter the question so that, it's so that we, so that we bring up that point?
Well, if we can't make it exclusively commercial, because that's illegal, we shouldn't ask.
Yeah, see, I was just trying to think about getting rid of, is it a good idea to mix housing with commercial? Because that's not a choice.
So we can't ask that.
So we can't, I'm just saying get rid of five A.
Right, right, that's what I did.
That's what you suggested, right.
And then however else we want.
So what was your rewarding, E B?
The town of Lime's commercial district is shown in the zoning map. Housing is allowed in this district. What form of housing should be located in the commercial district? And then all those choices.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And to answer your question, Tim, about the, the tax base, typically, the, the tax assessor, what I've been told from them is that a commercial is actually, um, you're getting less from taxes because the assessment on the property, um, the buildings, um, is less.
Right.
Um, because you don't have the, the fit and finish that you would have of a, a nice home.
Right, fancy kitchens.
Yeah, so you, they typically say that the commercial is actually less your tax base than.
Well, they don't, they do it on a different, the assessment is based on income stream, not on.
Not, no.
Not on.
Not anymore. I mean, certainly not today. I know, if you run a hedge fund out of your two be- two-bedroom bungalow, and you're bringing in a hundred million or five hundred million dollars a year, as long as you got an internet connection, you can make money, um, and you get taxed on a two-bedroom bungalow.
Yep.
Yeah. And that's, that's the heartbreaker of the natural tax system.
Right.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, what was your question?
No, I was just gonna have to move on.
Okay.
That's good.
Let's move on.
Yep.
So question eight?
What about seven?
I didn't have any problems with question seven.
Oh, okay.
Um, I had, where did the four? So I, I'm, I'm curious, where did the four units, besides it's something that Hanover just worried about, um, in number seven come from? We're asking, why, why are we suggesting that four dwelling units could fit on a lot?
I think that that was part, well, I think that was part because there was some discussion about going to two eighty U's.
That's just.
Being allowed.
So that would be three units.
Right, right, but, you know, divide the main house, and have two eighty U's.
I mean, Ray's got. I don't, I don't know how four got into this particular question. I will say that most of the planning workshops that I've been going to, they say, well, whatever you're zoned for, if you're gonna increase housing, you need to bump up to the next level. If you only allow single units, you should allow duplexes. If you only allow duplexes, you should go to four, three or four units.
Yeah.
Just because they can be made to look like your, your environment, um, your neighborhoods.
Right.
And that's a good way. I mean, if you could double the density of an inch of number of new properties, um, that, that would make a difference. So that, that's, that's a good justification for four.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's right, Rich. Now Ray's got four, within those two buildings.
And then a fifth.
See, the other thing that Ray ran into, according to the state regulations, if you put more than two units in a, in a existing building, you have to meet all these really ridiculous standards.
You have to bring, you have to bring your building up to the current new construction code.
Right, so Ray couldn't do that with that eighteen oh five house. I mean, it would have been ridiculous. I needed, they wanted to put new rafters in. And, and then the ceiling heights and, and the walls had to be attached to the foundation.
Well, I did know that part, yeah.
And all that stuff. So he just said, I can't do it. So that's why he had to tear off the whole back, build that whole new building, which was thirty feet away, and only put two units in the front, and it was crazy, you know, because he could have done it, you know, let, kept it the way it was and put four in, so. Anyway, whatever that means, but it, it is difficult to put more than two in an existing building if it's an older building.
Well, I think four is kind of the, it's kind of the middle ground of a comfort number as well, when we brought it up.
For noise and stuff.
Yeah, like, you can imagine living next to a couple of duplexes.
Yeah.
Like, going higher than that suddenly becomes an apartment building.
Yeah, well, I think, I think Rich is right when he says that four, you can have a building that still looks more like in keeping with.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. Somebody had a question on the.
I do.
What's the question?
Well, the table. I'm not figuring this table.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Because we have, a hundred households have yielded a hundred and eighty-nine elementary school students. And eighty percent of the households in Lime have no students. So it's like, does this ta- this table doesn't really tell, tell the story of how many units of increase? Because you would, you would increase, um, if you put, if it was evenly distributed, you know, one house in the, would come up with schoolchildren and four would not. So, so the units are not, is the number of kids that are, are calculated in this table doesn't seem quite right to me.
How would you calculate that?
Well, that, that was my problem.
I mean, basically, you just multiply three point eight times the number of additional units.
Point three eight, yeah.
Point three eight.
Yeah, if you take, if you take.
Times the number of units, and that's, that's all.
You go across evenly, but I was.
I mean, that's the only hard data that we had. Rich pointed that out. I think that that's an underestimate.
I think it's.
I think that's a very conservative estimate of the, of the people, of the number of students, but I was willing to go with that.
I, it's an overestimate.
Well, I think it's under.
Okay, if you're both.
Because of.
Well, then, then, then there we are.
Then we're just using, because we both disagree, okay, yeah.
So we should stick with it.
No one's happy with compromise, we just say it's the best we can do.
You know, it's gonna be interesting, there's almost ten houses for sale in Lime right now, which is really higher than it's been for almost ever, and they're not selling very fast. It'll be interesting to see how many kids come with all those ten or so. It will be interesting to see how many new kids come in. It will be interesting.
Well, I had a couple of comments on the third line up, up from the table. It says if ha- if, um, if housing growth in Lime were to proceed at the recommended rate, I think we, I think what we're saying is, the rate recommended by the R P C, isn't it?
Yeah, the recommended rate is doing a lot of heavy lifting in that sentence.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so can we just say that, uh, if, if it were to proceed at the rate recommended by the regional planning commission?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um.
Which is a hundred forty-five, I think, and not a hundred thirty-five.
Which I think you're right.
That's what it said on the first question.
It is.
Recommended by, what are we going?
Regional planning.
Regional planning.
No, I think I subtracted the number that were already built at this point, because the one forty five, the one forty came from twenty twenty. So I, I subtracted ten because David had said.
It already got them.
That, that, that they, that those were already built.
Okay.
So that's why that's one thirty.
All right.
Yeah, good point.
Also.
So will the readers trip over that fact? Uh, that's, and, and just ask the same question that I did. It's like, wait, you said a hundred and forty-five on the first page, and so, I don't, I don't know.
You might just wanna put in parentheses, adjust it for.
Well, it's already a long sentence.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's fine if anything, I mean, the point is that it's.
Can I also take out which is a conservative estimate, because I don't think it is. That's my point, that's one of my points.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think that we're kinda editorializing and I think we should just stick with our numbers.
Well, you could, you could, I guess it's, I guess you could say, instead of calling the co- the row total additional housing units created.
total additional housing units created, household added, you could say total additional housing units created slash households added from twenty twenty-five. So it says present to, to, so it's cumulative, actually. It's not in these intervals. So it's, you're right, it's a little confusing because I put intervals there and yet I'm, I'm actually.
Cumulating across.
Cumulating across the columns. So it's, so it's, and I'm accumulating the students as well.
Right.
So in, in fact, I guess you have to, may, instead of total, I should probably say cumulative additional housing units from twenty twenty.
But instead of an interval.
Now, what if, where it says present, what if we just put twenty twenty-five instead of present?
Yeah, you could do that.
And then it would be consistent with the others.
Yeah, and then it would be all consistent.
But, but no, no, it wouldn't.
Yeah, if you said cumulative.
Cum, if you said, but if you said, instead of twenty thirty-one to twenty thirty-five, you said by twenty thirty-five.
Okay. That's, that's reasonable.
Because it's not, you're not really, it implies that interval is adding ninety, it's just, just the way.
Okay, so you just say by twenty thirty, by twenty thirty-five, by twenty forty.
Yeah.
And then, and then change the row titles to, instead of total, cumulative. Cumulative additional housing units, cumulative additional elementary school students.
Yeah, that's good.
Can we take out, are we taking out which is a conservative estimate, Rich?
I, I think we should take that out.
We should take it out.
Sorry, Deb.
What does conservative mean, anyway?
Yeah. Nothing you want to talk about.
Red or a blue hat, right?
Is it more than that or is it less than that, I guess?
Yeah, exactly.
For planning, you would, you'd want to be.
Yeah, conservative would mean.
It was more than that, probably, it's probably.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was suggesting.
But it could be that, I mean, it's less than that, it's not, it doesn't have a direction.
No, yes, yeah, that's true.
Well, but I think, I think maybe worse, maybe that are thinking that because it's Lime and we know Lime is not the average, you know, it doesn't follow the rest of the state that much because of our unique situation here. But that's, you know, now I'm finding it.
But I don't know either, so I.
That's why I think it's conservative.
I was influenced by Tim's argument, so.
Well, does conservative mean less than we would expect or?
Let's just take it out.
Yeah, yeah, so, so let's, yeah, I'd say take it out.
So the first column, is that present to twenty thirty or by twenty thirty?
By twenty thirty.
By twenty thirty also, okay.
I do like the arrows.
Like those arrows?
Yes, I do.
Who, uh, Hebe, are you, you're taking notes on this?
I answered the Heidi and Phoebe as well, just in case we get lost.
Maybe David, have you taken notes?
I, no, I've got it. I think you're.
David's not gonna be here next week, so.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here on next Thursday.
My name is Hebe, but everybody calls me either Heb, Heidi, or Phoebe.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just nodding smile.
So are we good for nine?
Is that a family name?
Great goddess of youth.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, my gosh, wow.
Okay, nine is good. Up to three, I wondered rather than having the hyphens, if there should be a, like, line?
Don't worry too much about the formatting, because when we go to.
Oh, when it goes to SurveyMonkey, it'll be.
You know, it, it's like when you move one thing in Microsoft Word and all of a sudden, you know, your margins are shot and the font's screwed up, so.
Oh, can we go back to question number four, I apologize?
Let's, let's just finish nine. Nine is fine and it'll, it'll be, and you want, do you want to check up to three, is that?
Please check up to three, yes.
Okay. And then, how long have you, would it line? The demographic question?
Well, please check up to three, should we say please check no more than three?
Yeah, that might be more clear.
Please check as many as three?
No, I think no more than three. I think that's, that's the clearest.
Check up to three isn't, I mean, it's so clear, it doesn't really mean anything.
I think no more than three is the most clear to people.
All right.
And should none be actually the first potential choice rather than, next to last?
No.
No.
I want them to look.
So you want them to read through all of these things?
I want them to suffer.
Yeah, you see, that's the thing, I think that, I think they're different. Well, okay. I think, I think it's, I think it's leading the witness.
I think putting none first is leading the witness.
What?
Putting none first is leading the witness.
They could, if they don't like any of them, they could get to the bottom.
They know they've got a lot more to read, so, you know.
Well, they gotta be three.
You see, you don't even know that none's gonna ever be.
None is always a choice.
And that's why I would, that's why I would put it first.
You didn't learn the first principle of taking a test is look over the whole test?
No, 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 they have to be really, really desperate to get to none.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why I'm saying that she'll go first.
Or out the middle.
Yeah, she'd go, she'd go first.
Hide it right in there.
She'd go first.
Let's list them alphabetically, so N would, N would be just before preservation.
Actually, I, I do agree with you there, because, because people might, yeah, if they start going down through, they might start checking these things. By the time they get to none, they'll have already checked three.
Right, and then they're gonna say, oh, yeah, none is what I really want.
But you're in electronic form, you go back and you delete that.
Yeah, unless you're not, unless you're just checking them.
They never close it off.
Well, if you just put none first, then they can, they can say, none, that is definitely not what I want, none, I'm gonna read the rest of this. I don't know, I think.
Yeah, I agree, but anyway.
Let's, let's keep going.
All right, back to four.
Uh, so back to four.
And what if I am forty-five years old? Which one do I check first?
You get your choice.
Eighteen to forty-five, and it's including forty-five.
And so the next one says forty-five to sixty-five.
So change it to forty-six to sixty-five?
Yeah, we're starting at forty-six, yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's a good point, actually.
I wish I was forty-five.
So my question on.
You have to check both.
You can check both, though.
They still only check one, it's like, ah.
My question on number four was, it feels to me like we should be listing those in the order that they are on our little description sheet. Because there were a couple that were kind of. So if somebody's actually looking at the description, if we just change that.
Reorder.
I think, I think the skiway was.
Yeah, I, I did this in the order of the, of the table of uses.
So the only thing that's out of order is the mountain forest is, should be moved down.
To the bottom.
Yeah, that's the only one that's out of order, right?
And I don't think skiway was even in there.
Yeah, but skiways, there's no housing allowed in the skiway district.
No housing.
Right.
Well, some people might think that there should be.
They, they consider the planning board.
I think Dartmouth thinks that they should.
They consider the planning board.
They would love to put condos up on the, the mountain.
Yeah, because the college owns all that, right?
Yeah. So I'm sure the college would love to do that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the college would love to do that, they can barely get internet up there.
We've got Lime Fiber now.
All right.
So, so we don't need to include the skiway then?
No.
I don't, we don't know.
Okay.
And if you want to, to add it.
And then in six, I'll make the order the same as well.
Okay. Wow, what a piece of work.
Are you being facetious?
No, I just, you know, it's really, I hope people like it and respond to it, because we're like silver.
Yeah, well.
Number twelve, do you hope by rent?
Two.
So it might be hope to buy.
Yep. It's amazing how many times you can look at something and not notice.
Yeah.
And then we.
I'm dyslexic and my mind puts things in where they're not.
As it should. I mean, you know, that's the magic, this is why the human species survives.
That's why you can read so fast.
I wonder if twelve is like, it has two questions. So, yeah, I want to buy a smaller house, but I don't want to continue to live in Lime, so then do I say, I just say no?
No, exactly. Because it's like, are you gonna plan to stay here?
Then, then, then what we think is that, oh, you're gonna stay in your big house.
I think we're trying to assess the demand for smaller houses in Lime.
Yeah, but somebody might wanna buy a smaller house, but they would not want to rent at all.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, buy rent isn't my problem, my problem is this has two questions.
So why don't just take out N, continue to live?
Well, we did, we just asked, do you plan to move out?
Okay.
And then.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, do you want a smaller house? I think what we really care about is do we want a smaller house? Because if they want to move out, because they want to be close to the CBS, then they will say yes in eleven, and then in twelve.
Should we swap eleven and twelve?
Sure.
Buy a smaller house, yes, no?
Yeah.
Do you plan to move out of Lime, yes, no?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's a better way to do it. Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's hard, because do you plan to move out of Lime in the next five years? It really depends what the property taxes do next year.
Knew you were gonna say that.
When we're set by this company.
This is where Tim's gonna talk about taxes.
I mean, we may be gone, we could be gone.
It's gonna be bad.
For three years.
The MS one only raised the value of the town by one percent?
No, 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 a tenth of a percent.
A tenth of a percent.
So all the, all the increased spending from the budget we passed from school and town, that was like, I can't remember, five, six percent? A hun, all of that is going into your tax, into the tax rate. And it'll be up by five or six percent.
So, yeah.
Wonderful.
Wonderful, that's right.
Well, the appraisals are gonna be hard, because this, this company's never done Lime and there's gonna be a lot of, I think, problem in the way.
If you're paying a hundred thousand dollars, they can figure it out.
What?
Goes into your tax rate.
What's that?
Which goes into your tax rate.
I mean, a hundred thousand dollars here, a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that's, we can save it for that, haven't we?
Yeah.
That's a capital reserve.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
But anyway, we'll see.
Okay, so.
All right, so.
So next steps, because we, David's not here next meeting.
What do you need next week?
Who's not here?
David Robbins.
Oh, David, yeah.
I'm going to Colorado for a couple of days.
Oh, really, nice.
Just going to a wedding.
Yeah, so I guess that's a question, what are we doing?
We need to do, I mean, do we need to like bless this thing and get it out, or what, what are we doing?
Yes, I'd like to get it out.
I'd like to get it out, too, so we don't need David for that.
Well, well, yeah, we need, so logistically.
He knows how to, he has the keys to the town. Oh, shoot, which I forgot to look.
You need to look, because if you show up next week without a key, you're gonna be meeting in the parking lot.
No longer warm.
So David, logistically, to actually get this in the mail.
Yes.
You need to come up with a map, right? Okay.
That's why I'm waiting around.
And then you need to have them printed somewhere.
Well, that's.
And then you have to get the envelopes, and then you have to run it through the post office, and you have to get the money from somewhere.
Yep.
We don't have the money yet.
So, all right, I'm looking at my budget for this year and I have been very frugal. And there are several line items that I have not spent on, so I can probably reassign a good portion of what's needed. Look up behind you. This is a concept, probably, I was talking with Hebe, probably should go with black and white instead of color. But the idea of showing.
We'll do, we'll do it with color, but with colors that reproduce in black and white.
Or I can do different types of hatching.
Right, yeah.
But my concern was that the smaller districts just don't show up well, and so.
I think the inset's are really great.
I think I would, I, I'm wondering, to work with the colors, I mean, and to draw a line to the, from the inset to the commercial district, from the inset to just.
I don't know, that gets kind of messy.
Where does Lime Center?
Yeah, it's right there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a tiny little thing.
So, so it needs a line.
Can you change the, the width of the black lines, can you make them better?
Yeah, I think what I was, I was just.
That's what you're seeing on the screen. Here, this is.
Well, if you draw the lines, it should be like straight lines or something, they can't block lines.
So.
Well, that's not so bad.
Right, that's.
That's actually a lot better, because now you can see Lime Center.
Right.
And you can see hold sledge, so.
Again, because of the, the resolution of the screen, the lines are kind of.
So, but I was gonna, I was gonna make a couple, a suggestion that I, the colors I don't think work particularly, they're just.
No, I just chose them randomly.
Exactly, exactly, it was a, you know, fine, now we look at it, we can think about, you can look online for different choices for.
Weren't you colored lined anyway?
No. Dyslexic, but not colorblind. But I am very unartistic and colors are not my.
You can look online for colors for maps that work really well. Also, what you can also do on top of that is you turn all the lot line boundaries to gray, to pale gray, and then you boost up the roads. And that can read some, I mean, there's things that you can do that are not losing information, but suppressing information. It's not key here, but it's.
Oh, much better, yeah, already better.
So, see what I'm saying, so, so this was just.
It's very easy to change that type of thing.
Exactly, exactly. And so I was just suggesting that maybe I could work with Dave on this and not, not take up all you guys' times about.
And just put a title on it, Town of Lime, smaller district or something.
And then, but I do, I really do think we need the lines to point, people are never gonna find whole sledge, you know.
Yeah.
So the, the deal then is that the lines need to be fairly bold. I mean, nobody cares about, well, where's Bailey Hill Lane?
No, exactly, exactly. But the, and I think the main drag, Route Ten, Norwich, I mean, North Deptford, East Deptford, Dorchester, and all of those leave, just to be, to be boosted a little bit.
Maybe state roads be boosted?
The bit, people just need to orient themselves.
Yeah.
They can figure it, and that's why we, we also put the names of the towns in tonight, so that you can see where you are.
You gotta, you gotta make it simple, so.
Exactly.
And like I said, it's hard because of the resolution on the screen is not what you're going to get.
No, exactly, exactly, so.
So I've just added, or darkened the roads, not the state highways.
Yep. Is it, you know, as I look at this map, it's hard to find things. It's almost like if you could swap, uh, put the, the inset for the commercial zone down at the bottom, and Lime Cent, and then put Lime Center up at the top, I'll actually then swap Lime Common and Lime Center. Then you could have fairly direct lines.
Yeah, like the lines.
If Lime, if Lime Common were in the upper left corner, you could then have a nice back line. Oh, my goodness, at no time do his fingers leave his hands.
Who knew that editing was a spectator sport?
So you want, uh.
So Lime Center should be at the, right over next to the legend, at the top right, yeah. Yeah, oh, I love it.
Another thing, you, I don't know whether you can do it, but can you actually remove the roads from the colored areas in the major, because you can see the roads in the inset. So if you removed the roads from the.
Maybe, yeah.
From the colored areas in the large map, it would bring those areas out more.
Guys, I need to go, I've got a phone call, I need to be home for nine thirty, just for the West Coast.
Hey, let's finish moving the districts around.
So, commercial on the lower left. And I will change where the, and that legends, yeah, I have to change, but I'll. And then. The, or the.
And are we gonna meet next, next Thursday?
I think we should meet, just to approve, I mean, so.
Okay. Okay.
A final, final layout of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Is gonna put this in SurveyMonkey.
Put, put, put this in SurveyMonkey after, after next meeting?
Okay.
And we may be talking a little bit about zoning things, um, next week, too. So any changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sort of.
Yeah, so Nat, when you're talking about roads, are you, let's, the, we have lot lines, which I can get rid of.
Oh, well, maybe the lot lines, if you can get, oh, that is so much better.
Ooh. You don't know where you are.
No, I, I think, I, I, what I was saying is leave the lot lines in for everything except for the colored areas. Because they are in the, in the inset, the, the lot lines are in the inset, uh, and so you don't really need them, yeah, there you go, well, see, yeah, right. Yeah, so there you can see them, if you want to see where your lot is, or you're looking for lot density or whatever.
But you're only seeing now in.
You can look at it in the inset.
Because you're only seeing now in the, the rural district.
Right.
Right.
Everything else, because the rural district is, does, in this is represented as no color, so it doesn't, right.
Right, yeah, we probably, in the mountain forests, we probably don't need that.
The lot lines.
Well, I don't know, to me, that looks like, whoa, that's one big lot we should really be.
David Rowley must have known.
We really put some houses, we should put some houses on that, baby, drill, baby, drill, you know?
Yeah.
I think you shouldn't, you need to leave.
Nobody, yeah, maybe they're gonna say, nobody owns that.
We'll play with it, we'll play with it.
Okay, yeah.
But I, I forgot to mention, Rich gave me the number of houses, residences that were in each of the districts, and I was gonna just add that to the descriptions. Like, there's a hundred and nineteen houses in the Lyme Common and Centered districts together, and then eighteen in the Commercial District, just as another data point.
You mean, add them to Vicki's description?
Exactly.
Yes, yeah, that'd be fair. People, in, in, in fact, that was what the members of the public actually wanted to hear.
Yeah.
They, it specifically said the number of houses there.
Yeah, well, that'd need more pages.
No, it won't, no.
That's what I mean, it won't add pages to it, yeah.
Are we gonna adjourn soon?
Yes.
So soon?
Is there anything else that we need to?
Do you like the contoured look or the solid look?
It's the contoured.
This is the, see, there's contours in the district?
So David, next week.
In the mountain district?
If we, on Thursday, if we.
Oh.
If we approve this.
How it'll come up, black and white, I don't know.
Yeah.
So if we approve this next week.
Yes.
Somehow, the final version.
When are you back?
And when you go back.
I'm back on Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday.
On the following week, yeah, so then after that, you might be able to start doing some of the work to actually get it mailed.
Yep.
Okay.
And what, you know, well, though the, I'll check on, I'll try it next week, um, we've got a big, oh, there are four hearings for the zoning board, there's a lot of stuff I'm getting done for that right now. I gotta get all the notices, and so that's, I have to get that done next week, that, that is, has to be done.
When are you leaving?
I'm leaving, uh, when, I'll be here Wednesday, not here on Thursday.
Oh, it's a quick trip.
Yeah, it's just for a wedding on Saturday and.
So you have three days next week to work, huh?
I have three days next week to work, and like I said, I'm, once I get all the stuff for the zoning board, I'm pretty close to that, but I also have a stack of building permits that some of them are getting close to their two-week periods, I, those have to get out, so next week is not going to be a good week for.
Any of this.
Any of this.
Well, you know, if we, where do you usually get things mass-produced?
Well, that, that's the other issue, is I'm looking at not printing these, be, doing it in-house, because it will.
We won't have to pay as much.
We won't have to pay as much, and I, I don't have the, the, I have enough in my budget, I think, to cover the postage.
Well, what about, I mean, this is the.
Does the planning board have any budget?
What?
Does the planning board have any budget at all?
No, I asked last year and it got taken out by the budget committee.
We get no money.
So I would thrash the budget committee and all their members, if we knew any.
Well, we probably, we probably spent so little that they probably figured we didn't need any or something. Well, and then, and then, and the select board's defense, they were working really hard to keep the town side of the budget.
So this, on the backside of the cover letter, is the only thing that's color.
Yeah.
So this could be done at Staples or Kinko's or something.
It would be okay with me if we found good colors and a good combination of line widths and, and all.
Yeah, yeah.
That reproduced fine in black and white.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so you want to just make, not, not printing, not sending the prints out in.
I'd be.
I would wait for the math, would be very difficult.
Yeah, I, I think the color is wonderful, you know, it really.
Yeah, but where do you, where would you go?
Um, it'd probably be Nomad copies, or.
Gnomon? Gnomon and Gahanover?
Yep.
I can, I can do that, I'm happy to do that kind of thing.
So I, what I'd have to do is ask him, and ask him what would cost to have that printed.
One, one side.
And then you would, then you would print your stuff on the back, you'd stick that in your copy.
And then, and then how do we get it produced, so we, we print out ski copies of this thing, and then do, do we fold it and stuck in business envelopes, or do we send it out in flats, or?
It goes out to the post office in envelopes, all sealed.
And, but how, you know, and the question I'm sneaking up on.
How does it go from copyer to envelope?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at, at the people who are going to do, who are going to have to do this.
And then addresses get put on at the postal.
There's no addressing.
You can't call those guys, or how is this postal service?
You could, if you wanted to make the phone call, feel free, right?
If you'll start putting tents up, Nat, I'll start calling those guys for you.
Maybe get CCL to come in and help us.
Yeah, I think they're looking for something to do.
There are, but, yes, it would be, I would need the board to come in and, um, it would not be a, a meeting, no business would be discussed, it would be strictly. We have to talk about the red socks, that, that's fine.
Does it have to be noticed, or?
No, it would not be, because, as I said, there would be no, it would be no different than all of a sudden having four members show up at the dump. You know, it's not a, it is not a meeting, it is not, there is no business being discussed, you're folding and stuffing envelopes.
You can play.
I wonder if we could rent, if anywhere around here rents the machines for doing that.
So there, um, Gnomon has a tri-fold machine.
Yes, but they, it costs.
But it's, it's like a tenth of a cent per piece, I mean, I'm making the number up, but it's a really small amount per piece, and that might, it might only work, you could ask them. What, what are options for tri-folding?
They, they typically want to print everything in, you know, because the, the, the tri-folding, um, they're charging you a reduced rate because they are making their money on the printing, and it's just as easy to, you know, in their production line to throw everything through the machine, you know, no big deal.
So we're doing around eight hundred?
Yep.
We know exactly how many?
I don't know, I have to see what Robin tells me, and, you know, because I want to get the sizes, or the weight and everything, so that we know. I gotta ask her one, especially since their phones have been down, trying to get hold of her and, you know, getting used.
Thank you, Nat.
Thank you, Nat.
You guys, keep going.
We have a motion.
Don't give up.
All right, all right, you made it, uh, we close the meeting down.